October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty city council meeting. And I will call on our city recorder to do a roll call. Claudia.
Councilor Drabkin.
Present.
Councilor Geary.
It's a pleasure.
Councilor Garvin.
Here.
Councilor Stassenz.
Here.
Councilor Peralta.
Here.
Council President Minky.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you Claudia for that roll call. And make note that the full council is here this evening. That takes us to our comments from citizens. And so any interested citizen may speak out on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We will have those that would like to address the council. Let it be known to our city recorder. And we can do that by the raise of hands, but we will recognize you. Limit our comments to three minutes per person. If you wish to speak, please announce your name. Number one, unmute your mic, announce your name, and then we will get your address for the record. And so at this point, I will make note that Mark Davis had submitted comments relating to our proposed reserve and fund balance policy. I think he thought he may not be able to make it this evening, but I see the marks on, but I'll turn it over to Claudia. Is there anyone that has indicated that they'd like to speak to the council this evening? Claudia?
Yes, we'll start with Alexis Biddle on Zoom.
Alex, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Alexis Biddle, representing One Thousand Friends of Oregon. Before I begin, based on just some things I learned this evening, Mayor Hill and perhaps City Attorney, if it's appropriate with you, I'd like to speak to McMinnville's urban growth process in general terms and also refer to tonight's presentation and the work session. But I understand what you just mentioned about quasi judicial matters.
So Amanda, what's your read on that? I think we're still in the discussion phase, so I think it would be open to discussion tonight.
Correct, and as long as Alexis, as you understand, it doesn't give you standing to participate in any court proceeding without appearing at the public hearing.
Understood, thank you.
And so Alexis, again, we will set the timer for three minutes, and I know that doesn't give you a lot of time, but go ahead.
I'll do my best, thank you. So our hope is for a collaborative effort to balance farmland preservation with the urgent need for housing and especially affordable housing in McMinnville. As you know, One Thousand Friends of Oregon has a long history of involvement here, and I've only been around for a fraction of that time, both in my entire life and in my career at One Thousand Friends. As a newcomer to this conversation, I'd like to add a fresh perspective. First, I'd like to state a few things upfront. We know that a significant urban growth boundary amendment is likely warranted in McMinnville. We also believe that while it is important to prioritize redevelopment within the urban growth boundary and in exception areas where it makes sense with more affordable development patterns, some potential UGB expansion into exception areas will not lead to development of affordable housing, and that some flatter, higher quality farmland will offer greater opportunities for more affordable and inclusive communities through area and master planning. Nonetheless, we will view the proposal in light of the Court of Appeals remand process and other relevant land use laws. But what we've learned tonight so far has made me optimistic. Our intention is to work as cooperatively as possible to get to yes, so that we can all move to the future urban reserves discussion and the future UGB amendments. Knowing these future conversations lie ahead of us, we'd like to foster a positive relationship based on common understanding of the shared goals that I believe we all have. Communication will be key. I want to thank the Planning Department for their work in providing clear presentations of the plan to adopt the UGB amendment and end their communication with us throughout this process. Special thanks to Director Richards for reaching out to us and scheduling a meeting to go over some of the more technical issues that we care about. We look forward to that conversation and future opportunities to publicly engage in critical discussions for the continuing legacy of McMinnville's vibrancy. Through managing growth in a way that prioritizes affordable housing and inclusive communities while protecting our irreplaceable agricultural lands, the backbone of the economy of McMinnville, Yamhill County, and Oregon for generations to come. Thank you for your consideration and for your tireless dedication to your community.
Thank you, Alex. And again, I see that Sid and Mark are on the call, and you know, we've been working hand in hand as we have been bringing this over the last year together. And I know we're going with the remand just to make the discussion a little more tight. But again, it is our intent to work hand in hand. And I think, as you indicated, Heather has been willing to do that. So again, I appreciate the words of encouragement as we address the urban growth boundary to give us more flexibility to get our land prices in line to have affordable housing in McMinnville.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Claudia, do we have?
Yes, we have Javier Ruiz.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Speak your full name and your address, if you would.
Okay, good, I was just doing a little bit of promotion. My name is Javier Ruiz, and my address is thirteen fifteen Northwest Medina Drive, McMinnville.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, city councilors. I am a Hispanic business owner and chamber member. My wife Brittany Ruiz is running for a seat on this council. Since moving to McMinnville nearly six years ago, my family fell in love with the city and the community. We have tried hard to give back to the city we love. We frequent many local businesses and shop local to contribute to the economy. I have supported Brittany's philanthropy by helping minorities, Hispanics, blacks, and low-income families who lost their children into the foster care system, including when we helped reunite a first-time mother and her baby by opening our home to them. Our family has donated time, funds, and materials to the See You Later Foundation, Champions Run for Heroes, McMinnville Christian Academy, Yamhill County Special Olympics, McMinnville Habitat for Humanity, Henderson House, and many others. When the fires were ravaging Oregon last month, Brittany and I, with the help of many others, organized over eight hundred rig packs containing food and beverages for our exhausted firefighters, not only in McMinnville, but for an additional thirteen other fire departments in Oregon. However, even with all these positive actions, I was personally attacked by one of my own city councilors, Sal Peralta, in the local newspaper and on social media. I have never met Councilman Peralta, but he is directly involved with the spreading of defamatory and libelous accusations about me, my family, and my faith. Instead of contacting me to discuss issues, he decided to go directly to the newspaper and social media sites where his comments were immediately printed and read by members of my community. I can't tell you how that feels to sit there with your children nearby reading a story about things that are untrue and wondering how this will impact me, my business, and my family. By the way, I would have immediately accepted to have a conversation with Peralta. In fact, I'm still open to that. These stories that Mr. Peralta is spreading come from an out-of-town blogger whose work has been discredited and dismissed as biased tabloid trash. The lack of credibility has been well documented, and a simple Google search will tell you everything you need to know about the trustworthiness of the source. While my family's good name has now been smeared with salacious, unfounded rumors, I couldn't help but notice that the person spreading these rumors had his own problems. I decided to check up on this individual and found out that Peralta had an official cease and desist reprimand from Kate Brown, then Secretary of State, citing that his party's actions were, and I quote, "engaging in conduct that may constitute a criminal violation." This city council preaches equity and inclusivity. As a Hispanic, this is not how my family has felt over the past month. As a result, we have implemented increased personal security for our safety. I am here tonight, Mayor Hill, I'm almost done, I've got two more lines to say. I am here tonight as I will not stand by and allow my reputation and our good work denigrated by our very own elected officials. This experience has deepened my resolve as to why it's time for positive change on the city council. It has given me firsthand experience of the many stories our neighbors have told us about how citizens and businesses are treated.
Thank you, it's been more than two lines. Thank you for your comments this evening. We've hit over three minutes.
Okay, I believe there's good people here, and they won't stand up to bigotry, and especially for ethnicity. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Do we have any other comments? Claudia?
Yes, I have Hannah Brandt here.
Okay, Hannah? Welcome, Hannah.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Hannah Brandt. I live at five forty-five Southwest Drumwood Avenue, and I'm giving comment today to express my opposition to the downtown exclusionary zone, or DEZ. I understand I may be reiterating what other community members have already voiced in the four years since the ordinance was passed that instated the DEZ, but I would be remiss not to share my belief that this piece of code further disenfranchises vulnerable populations and ultimately harms the fabric of our entire community. The continued existence of an exclusionary zone sets a precedent for the uncontested passage of further legislation that prioritizes the enforcement of certain aesthetic standards and the protection of property over the well-being of people, which I believe should be respected regardless of their ability or their desire to conform to an oftentimes oppressive standard of respectability. The designation of the downtown core as the economic and cultural center of the city does not necessitate a moat. By its continued enforcement, the DEZ identifies downtown as a region accessible only to those who have implicitly agreed to abide by an elitist code that I would argue is reminiscent of historical exclusionary laws in Oregon that terrorize people on the basis of their race and nationality. The creation of a healthy and inclusive community is not accomplished when we rely on archaic concepts of exile and public shaming, but rather when we begin to dismantle the very conditions that criminalize people in the first place. Restrictive geographies like the DEZ have the potential to create certain unavoidable conundrums for many people within which their lack of resources becomes a crime. Where a trap was quickly assembled, we could have provided a service first. If, for example, a person were to be threatened with exclusion for the repeated violation of public urination, would not the construction of one public restroom within the bounds of the so-called DEZ provide the possibility of rendering this violation moot? Currently, our obsession with punishing people for violations on the basis of what we often believe are moral grounds overlooks the truth, which is that perhaps we are punishing people for being poor or for experiencing mental illness. In the ordinance establishing the DEZ, councilors noted that the zone is, quote, "especially vulnerable to impacts associated with criminal antisocial behaviors which can negatively impact customer traffic and result in loss of property." If these are primary concerns, I would point to the McMinnville Police Department's annual crime report for some perspective, which noted that in 2019, one of the most commonly reported crimes against property was fraud, which outpaced burglary, motor theft, and arson. To me, this makes clear that in many ways the enforcement of the DEZ is synonymous with the city's desire to focus its policing efforts particularly harshly on people who spend time in public spaces without consistently physically presenting or spending their money in the ways we expect and are unfairly criminally profiled as a result. While I understand that you may counter that enforcement of the DEZ ordinance is reserved mostly for particularly egregious violations or repeated offenses, I prefer to maintain that the mere threat of exclusion does enough to harm people who are already contending with a number of stressors. The concept of a moralized, criminalized zone presents not only a legal threat, it serves as a psychological weapon that can be wielded by people with an outsized degree of power against people who are wrestling for a modicum of autonomy.
Hannah, we hit our three minutes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your insights in addressing us. Claudia, do we have others?
Yes, Joseph Polivka.
Joseph?
Hey, y'all, thank you for having me.
Sure.
I am Joseph Polivka. I live at six four nine Northeast Eleventh Street here in McMinnville. And I just wanted to address, similar as Hannah did, ordinance fifty seven three, or five zero seven three, and five zero six four. Quick note, Martin versus Boise charged the legal landscape in the Ninth District regarding the criminalization of homelessness and municipal overreach and infringing on individual liberty. The city attorney mentioned wanting to revisit McMinnville's own illiberal camping ordinance. What is the council and attorney's stance on the legal liability this restriction on individual freedom exposes the city to? Also, the second ordinance, downtown exclusion zones and similar ordinances have been challenged in courts in the Ninth District as they appear to potentially impose restrictions on constitutionality or constitutionally protected rights of due process and freedom of travel and assembly. Does the city attorney and council have any comment on the legal liabilities the downtown exclusion zone may expose the city to? And is there any plans to amend?
Well, thank you for your comments. This is just a one-way conversation. We would ask you if you'd like to follow up with the city attorney to do so, and we can work through giving your information to Claudia, and we can reach out. But this is a one-way conversation, it's comments to the council this evening. So give Claudia your information, and we will have staff reach out to you.
Sure, and the council didn't vote on these ordinances? Or is it, no future ordinances would go through the council? I'm sorry, I just am a little confused why it's a one-way conversation in that regard.
Again, just because we have time limits, and getting in a conversation, and we have no control, and typically, there's quite a few people that would like to have an opportunity to address the council, and we will reach back out to you through staff. And you can call any member of city council or myself just to have a discussion. And on the website, you can see how to get ahold of us. We'd be more willing to do that than not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Thank you for your presentation this evening.
And next, we have Leslie Lucier on Zoom. We'll go ahead and unmute your mic.
Leslie, welcome.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Perfect. Hi, good evening, Mayor Hill and city councilors. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. As stated, my name is Leslie Lucier. I'm a resident in Ward Two here in McMinnville. And I just wanted to call in tonight to voice my concern to the council regarding some of the current behavior taking place in our community during this election cycle. That being said, I don't expect you to be able to control the actions of anyone, but I do expect you to set an example for our community. And your silence surrounding the personal attacks that have taken place toward current city council candidates is really disappointing to me. The religious bigotry coming from our community and directly from the council itself should be denounced immediately. You took an oath to uphold the Constitution, and some of the behavior coming from the council is in direct violation of that oath. And I believe that surely some of you on the council must know that this behavior is wrong, and I'm sincerely asking you to please speak up. And for those of you who have been participating in the attacks, I'm asking for you to please stop. It is possible to have differences and to voice them respectfully without attacking one another, and I believe that you can set the tone for that to happen. And it really needs to happen, because McMinnville deserves better. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Leslie, for your comments. Claudia, any other?
We do have Mike Fair, who has raised his hand, but I need to get some information from him as well. If he can, we can unmute his mic, but I will need information from him for the public record.
Okay, Mike, we will unmute, and if you would speak your name and your address for the record.
Yeah, of course, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
That's great. I've got a residence in town as well as a business, so I'm not sure which one needs to be on the record. I did type it in, so I apologize.
Yeah.
But my address is fifteen sixty Southeast Essex Street here in McMinnville.
Welcome, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I don't have a speech prepared. In fact, I've only just moved to town last summer with my family. My wife is from here originally. And I'm a licensed teacher and administrator, and just wanted to introduce myself and let everyone know that I've got three kids at home who are distance learning. And of course, my wife works full-time. And from her circle of friends and what I've gathered, and I've been a stay-at-home parent for three years, and I've decided to open a tutoring center on First Street. So I wanted to introduce myself to the council and to you, Mr. Mayor, and just sort of let you know that I exist and that my philosophy is that I believe in access and equity and affordable services. I've taught in different states and lived a lot of places and been around the world. And even under normal circumstances, I've done some private tutoring. A lot of families can't really access that at forty and fifty dollars an hour, et cetera. So we'll be down on First Street. It's called Learn in the Now, and it's going to be extremely affordable, well under twenty dollars an hour. And I do math, English, science, social studies. I speak Spanish, and I teach music as well. And in the future, I'd also like to introduce adult ed classes. And then that's the extent of it, I suppose. And then if anyone, if you can point me in the right direction of how I might further develop the business or access other services in the city, that would be appreciated. But I realize this is just a comment area, so I understand if that's not possible as well. I'm sorry that I'm speaking so quickly. I'm trying to get everything in. And like I said, I only recently subscribed to the paper and opened it up and saw that there was a council meeting tonight. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mike, for your introduction, and we welcome you and your family to the community. And as I've mentioned, if you'd like to reach out to the counselor in your ward or any member of the city council or staff or myself, feel free to do that. Again, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And I just want to make sure that Claudia has the information that she needs from me so that she's done her job properly, I guess.
If you can just, in the chat function, just send me your email, I can then get further information from you or pass you along to those who you can talk to.
Great, thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Next, we have Bridget, who is on Zoom. We'll go ahead and unmute your mic.
Thank you. Do I need to give my address, or do you already have that now?
Claudia, are we okay?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Welcome, Bridget, go ahead.
Okay, great. Well, I'm just really echoing what Leslie said. I've been in McMinnville for four years. I participated in the Leadership MAC, gosh, two thousand eighteen nineteen. I'm part of the Leadership MAC Advisory Board. I'm part of the MAC Habitat Women Build. I pretty much, right when I got here, immersed myself in the community here. And I love McMinnville, but I have to say, reading some of the articles and hearing some of the social media posts that have been going on during this political season have been a little rough to take. I moved here from Southern California trying to get away from this big-city, backbiting, not very pleasant type of behavior. And I just would love all of us to make a point on whether you're Republican, whether you're Democrat, whether you're on the city council, whether you're not, to rise above the mudslinging. And let's have some actual conversation about what people believe in, what their stance is on things, and have dialogue. Because frankly, I'm kind of sick of all of this at a national level and now in my own hometown. It's not pleasant. So I'm really asking everybody, imploring you really, to let's take this to a level where all of us can participate and make decisions based on people's politics and what they want to bring to the city and not tearing people down.
Thank you so very much for your words.
Okay, thank you.
Lastly, we have Chuck, who has raised his hand, but I will need Chuck to provide information for me for the record.
Chuck? Have we unmuted Chuck? I see that he's still muted, Scott or Claudia?
We're trying to unmute him. Chuck, if you still would like to speak, can you please raise your hand again? If not, then we, I think, can move on.
Chuck, would you like to speak? Hit the raise your hand function? Not seeing no movement there. Again, reach out to Claudia if you'd like to speak. I don't see anything on my end, Claudia, so do we have others that would?
No, Chuck was the last one.
Okay. I do, again, just want to make record on the notes of Mark Davis's complete testimony this evening as it deals with the reserve and fund balance policy. And I think each member of the council has received that. With that being done, we close our comments from citizens this evening. Thanks to all that have addressed us this evening. We go to our advice and informational items this evening, and we will start with reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. And I'm just going to start with what's at the top of my screen. Adam, you are first, and Zach is not, okay? Adam, go ahead.
Evening, everybody. YCOM's meeting was canceled for lack of agenda items, and our Airport Commission will have a meeting on the fifteenth Thursday to continue our discussion on updating the minimum standards out there. So if anybody is an airport user or interested in what the airport would look like moving forward, it's a great meeting to attend and provide insight. My council, you know, and I'd be happy for those.
Thank you, Adam, for that report. Let's go to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a little bit on the September twenty-third meeting, the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force. And Kelly, you might have more to add. Kelly ran the meeting that day. I was in attendance on the phone, but I was at work. So Kelly, would you prefer to give the report on it?
You're muted, Kelly.
You're muted, but I'm going to assume you said no. Oh, thank you. Okay, so we had just two things that we were discussing. One is equity and inclusion and how that relates to housing and housing opportunities in McMinnville. And it may have been reported here already, but there's a Linfield intern that has been hired to work with the Planning Department as they undergo this assessment of housing and equity in McMinnville and policies related to such. And not just policies, but any practices as well so that the city can begin to remove barriers and incentivize. uh, begin to remove barriers and, um, incentivize housing equity. Um, and then we, uh, looked also at our action plan. Um, and Kelly, I'm gonna have to defer to you on this part, um, to, to report on, if you don't mind. If, if there's more to report than, uh, than, than just that we, we reviewed our action plan. I know there was some reprioritization. Um, I'm,
Kelly, you're muted. Kelly, you're muted.
Uh, I don't remember any substantial changes to it. I think we might have rearranged a couple of things, but I think we pretty much just approved it again. Heather? I,
It was, there, there was nothing. He, uh, yeah, Heather.
There she is.
Um, so it just adjusted some, uh, we talked a little bit about the emergency shelter ordinance and what that meant, uh, because that's been on the plan for a couple of years now. Um, relative to what's been occurring at the state level and at the local level because of our struggle to get an emergency shelter here. Um, and then the rest of it was, uh, just sort of mending timeframes based on what's going on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Remy. Uh, let's go down to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a really brief report. We are, uh, as I've mentioned, the last few meetings, uh, finishing up the process of hiring an executive director for, uh, the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governance. Uh, the last meeting, we, uh, had identified five or six candidates. I'm blanking on, I think we actually identified six candidates that will be doing some Zoom interviews with, uh, in about a week and a half and then settling on the final three candidates. So, finally nearing the end of a pretty lengthy process. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Uh, let's go to Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, okay, McMinnville Community Media update. Um, next board meeting, November sixteenth. Uh, currently, the programming slate is, uh, heavy on election content. Um, a lot of election-related programming. The local programmers, local hosts of local shows, uh, have interviewed a lot of the candidates um, in our local and, and other races. Um, so that's been airing, it's been airing a lot. Additionally, they're gonna partner with Kiwanis on running some of those, uh, candidate forums, um, helping with those. So, uh, good partnerships in the local area and trying to cover local relevant news, um, specifically the candidate elections. Uh, additionally, there's new window decals, uh, installed on the windows, which are a spiffy new design. Um, that's McMinnville Community Media. Uh, the MAC PAC, we met on the first day of October. Um, that meeting consisted discussing a lot about facilities and spacing therein. So sort of this much room, this much square footage for this type of room, this much square footage for this need and kind of the committee made some recommendations on, um, some areas. We also deci- decided we needed more work on some areas, specifically aquatics. We're gonna, we're gonna break off into an aquatic subcommittee. We did not formally make that recommendation of the sizing that was in the staff report for our meeting. Um, we're gonna break into a subgroup on the pool and aquatics portion of those to right-size and have those discussions around what pools make most sense. You know, um, I don't think anyone's coming from a place of shrinking the community offering we have on aquatics. Um, we're, we're looking at, at maintaining or growing and, and how we can, how we can have a really dynamic, uh, aquatic offering to the community for a long time and what does that look like and what's the, what are those investments? Tim Dallard from the, uh, project team is gonna join us for that discussion. He's just about the world's most expert on the building, designing and operating pools, uh, for jurisdictions. So, uh, that should be a really fascinating one. We also talked a little bit about the library because that was sort of in the, definitely, definitely in the facilities discussion that we're having, but it also was in this sort of rec, facility discussion that we were having. So we, we, we wanna look at, uh, uh, how we can redesign or refurbish the design of the library to meet a modern and future needs. But essentially, the decision was that the library's gonna stay there, um, in Upper City Park or, uh, for, for the time being and not really go at a satellite location in the new facility, assuming that it relocates to somewhere else. So, that was a, a, a good decision that came out of that group that'll come, coming back to us. Um, landscape review, nothing since the last meeting and nothing kind of on the radar. I guess all quiet on the landscape front. Um, the last part would, I would say, is I applied for and was selected to represent McMinnville on the, uh, Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Advisory Committee. I think I got that right. Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Advisory Committee at the, a council at the state level. So, uh, I'll be able to take my talents to that committee and see how long it takes them to kick me off, so.
And, and congratulations on that assignment, Zach, because I, from what, uh, what I read, there were a number of individuals that were wanting to bring their expertise and be on that, uh, state advisory committee and you were one of those and you represent McMinnville and the region in our area. So, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, and I'll plan on, as that gets moving forward, keeping the council apprised of what we're talking about and what we're looking at. So, uh, excellent. Thank you very much. That's my update.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Kelly. You're on mute there. You're still on mute.
All right, there, I'm all together again. Okay, I'm gonna talk mostly about a couple of meetings I attended this week. Uh, one of them I thought was fascinating that, uh, the mayor, Mayor Rogers from Newburgh announced that the mill had sold and it sold to a company named CDC, which I thought was rather interesting. It's a St. Louis company. Uh, it purchased a hundred and forty acres and it plans to basically bring the building down, clean it all up. There's a big remediation plan and, and this company does this on a regular basis. And then, uh, then develop it as industrial, commercial and probably some residential is my, uh, their understanding. And it was interesting because Abisha, Abisha Stone from the state was there and she was excited about it because I guess there's about five other mills in the area in Sher- between Sheridan and Willamina that might also be able to take advantage of this company. So that was one bright spot for the, on Tuesday. Uh, I guess that was today. Good heavens. And then, uh, on the, um, Economic Vitality Leadership Committee, uh, we have given away fifty-seven thousand dollars out of the two hundred thousand dollars we had. There were twenty-seven people that applied, five were disqualified because they'd received prior grants and monies from, uh, the government and twenty-two were eligible. So we're looking forward to, uh, probably having to give most of the money back. There is some plans for, uh, phase four on this. This was phase three or round four and, um, that will be handled by the Willamette Valley Workforce Partnership and probably not through McMinnville, but we still have the opportunity to take the, our share of the McMinnville dollars and use them in some form to help other businesses, assuming that, Jeff and everybody else agree. So I just bring that up. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, let's go to Wendy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my update is for the MURAC meeting that we had on the first Wednesday of the month in October. We had an additional seven. We spent the whole meeting reviewing an additional seven applications for the facade improvement. Uh, if you guys remember, we, um, did a special facade improvement to encourage people to invest in their businesses at this time. That has a higher, a lower match from the community member that's, uh, applying and a higher match from the urban renewal. And, um, we reviewed thoroughly that the city, uh, planning continues to do an excellent job of processing and, and presenting the information to enable us to um, review the applications and look at whether or not they meet the criteria. We approved some. We approved some with some conditions that the department was going to circle back with the owners on and a couple didn't really meet the criteria. Uh, or a few, like two or three. And so we are getting close to the end of the dollars that we had, um, earmarked for that program. Uh, there was the beginning of some discussion of maybe putting some of the contingency, contingency funds towards extending it, but there was no conclusion reached on that. So, and that took up the whole meeting this month. So the next one is the first Wednesday of November. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Uh, again, uh, the twenty-eight thousand that we were able to put out, and I think we've given a, a little over a hundred thousand in this fiscal year. Uh, it's a good program and it's really having an impact in our downtown area. Uh, I'd like just to go over a couple of things. I had an opportunity to have my monthly meeting with MEDP today. And for those that aren't aware, on October the fifth, TTNR was, uh, purchased by a company out of Seattle, Washington, Alvara. And they also are involved in, uh, tax, uh, compliance software. And that, uh, that purchase was for three hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. So our good friends out at TTNR, um, uh, have, have a new partnership and, and as I read the article out of, uh, Accounting Today, uh, it indicated that, uh, they're still going to work in partnership and we will still have an entity here in McMinnville, but we don't know, uh, for how long or what, but again, really good information. In talking to Scott this afternoon, again, a number of opportunities of companies coming into McMinnville that he's working with, more to be coming on that, but, uh, he's saying that there is as much, uh, uh, companies that are looking for opportunities in McMinnville and he's very optimistic about where we're headed. Um, I wanted to also share that, uh, last week I had an opportunity to be involved with MEDP. As you know, they typically, this time of the year, have their, uh, oh, annual awards banquet. And we had to go to the various companies and, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see more information coming up from MEDP, but, uh, we had a, uh, award given to the city of McMinnville in conjunction with the, uh, McMinnville Downtown Association for, uh, putting together our dine-out program. And so Jeff and myself and, and Dave and staff were able to meet and recognize for the partnership and the hard work to put together our dine-out program. I've shared with you that I've shared that with the governor and she stopped the meeting and applauded for, uh, the innovativeness of being able to keep safe and, uh, during COVID, but at the same time, keep commerce going. And so I'd just like to reach out to anyone that was involved in our, uh, our, our moving forward with the dine-out downtown. Uh, also would like to just do a brief update. Uh, last week, last Thursday, I had an opportunity to be called, be a part of the McM- the Mid Valley, um, uh, Willamette Valley, uh, uh, ACT program. And we had three items on our agenda there. The first one was we looked at Highway ninety-nine, uh, transit feasibility. The whole thrust of that discussion was transportation by bus from McMinnville all the way down to Junction City. And components of that would, might be, uh, going through, uh, Corvallis. And so we had a great discussion as to whether that's something that we want to pursue with, uh, counties or the owners of the transit districts are gonna need to participate if we move further down that, uh, that, uh, that path. We also had an opportunity to look at the ODOT All Roads, uh, Transportation Safety and it's called ARPS. And we were looking at the safety on our, our public roads through ODOT. And we have approximately sixty million dollars available for local agencies to work on safety projects within the ODOT, uh, region too. And we had a great discussion around that. And then lastly, we had, uh, MWAC. Uh, we were able to, uh, rank a number of items as a group and determine where we wanted to put our emphasis. And, uh, we have, uh, monies associated with what is called Fix-It, Enhance, Non-Highway and Safety Projects. And so we sent our notification off to the Oregon Department of, uh, uh, or the Oregon Transportation Committee and we'll come back. I made specific, uh, recommendations that we look at the Enhance program, which would give us more money locally to spend on things such as the Newburgh Dundee bypass. Um, and then, uh, just on a, on a note that I just wanted to share with everyone, uh, we received our report from the Oregon Health Association today. And, uh, yesterday we had our sixtieth death in the state. It happened to be an individual from Yamhill County, uh, eighty-six-year-old man and he passed away in his home. And so they're looking into whether a precon- pre-existing conditions was, uh, significant to that death. But yesterday we had eleven confirmed cases in, uh, Yamhill County. So we've seen highs and lows. We are back up somewhat on a high, so I just share with everyone to be safe and be careful out there. Uh, let's move over to staff at this point and-
Mayor, Councilor Garvin has his hand raised.
Okay, Adam?
I just wanted to add, I forgot, uh, kinda mentioned we were looking for some airport commissioners. We got two, two vacancies coming up on that. Uh, applications are due by November sixth. Either email Claudia or drop them off at, uh, City Hall and that term will run through two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you for bringing that up, Adam. That reminds me that last Friday, uh, Kelly, myself and, uh, uh, Jennifer and Jeff had an opportunity to interview nine candidates for the Budget Committee for two openings there. And so we're working through that and we're going to have some additional, uh, second interviews because we had such good candidates. We just wanna make sure that we get the right one to give us the support we need on the Budget Committee.
But it's good to know, Adam. If we, you know, frequently we try and place pay people other places and we might have, who knows, some candidates.
Yeah. Okay, let's go ahead and go to department heads. And I know, uh, the chief, if he's on the line, Rich, if you're on the line, uh, you've got a report for us on, uh, an update on the fire department call volume and then the, an update on the fire department's, uh, consolidation feasibility study. And so, uh, Chief, it's good to see you.
Good to be seeing you, sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilors, uh, just a couple of, uh, brief reports this evening, um, more statistical than anything. Um, there were some questions here in the last couple of months on how our calls are doing. Some of it is in pertaining to how our revenues are doing and we're working on that. We'll be producing that report in conjunction with the city finance review that we promised council. Um, but there were some questions also about the care home issues. And, uh, if, if you take a look at the ca- care home calls, um, in two thousand eighteen was the year that the ordinance was passed and then, and then repealed shortly after. Uh, in eighteen, it shows an average of a hundred and forty-three, but we are at an average of a hundred and fifty, uh, pre-ordinance and we were down to an average of a one hundred post-ordinance in nineteen, one hundred. And it's been consistent at the one hundred mark, um, until two thousand twenty, where we're at the eighty-two, uh, calls per month mark right now for the first nine months of the, um, of the year. And a large part of that reduction from one hundred to the eighty-two was due to the COVID and the policies and practices required by the state for the care homes to keep, um, their clients in, in the care homes as much as possible. Um, the remaining data is, uh, is basically the same, uh, report that you see in our, our annual budget with a nine-month snapshot for two thousand twenty on where we're at and where we anticipate being. Um, and, um, as, as far as the call volume goes, and that's the, that's what we're, we're monitoring as we move forward. Our call volume is gonna be relatively consistent, it appears to be with, uh, in line of two thousand nineteen, if things stay the same as they are currently. Um, and we will, again, we'll address the fiscal impact. We're working on that now as well as, while it's not in the report, um, we're working on the GEMT money for two thousand nineteen, twenty, uh, and hoping that, uh, that was during the, um, part of that, that report, part of the GEMT report that we're producing, um, was for the first half of two thousand twenty, which is when COVID, um, hit and our, um, call volume reduced significantly in, uh, March and April and, um, and parts of May. So we're working on, um, numbers right now to kind of see what that return will look like, uh, compared to last year's three hundred and thousand and change. The second report that I have on the table basically is just an update for the consolidation feasibility study. On the twenty-ninth, we had a two-hour, a very fast review of a four-hundred-page document. That document landed on my desk last night. Um, so we have two weeks to get through it, make sure that the technical accuracy of the, of the information in the document is accurate and get it back to them. Uh, they have two weeks to return that back to us so we can produce it to the elected officials, um, yourselves and then start coordinating, um, meetings for the consultant to be here to discuss it with the, uh, with the elected officials.
Any questions for the chief? Any questions for the chief?
Just one, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Just one question, Chief. Relative to the two thousand nineteen staffing levels, I know you were below full capacity on staffing for much of the year in two thousand nineteen. What is the call volume relative to current staffing? Meaning, are you at full capacity, whereas you were at a less capacity a year ago? And and how does that relate to servicing the call volume?
We have one, we have one full time vacancy that just occurred a week and a half ago, a week ago. And we have the two part time and we have three conditional offers placed on the table now. And compared to two nineteen, I have to go back and evaluate two nineteen. I don't have that information right right at hand right now. If you're asking like how many calls per person we ran.
No, more like, more, sorry, Chief, I didn't mean to, but more like it seemed to me that you were kind of below your full capacity for staffing quite a bit more in two thousand nineteen, maybe than in two thousand twenty. And I was trying to get a sense of whether that perception was was a true perception or not.
I can get that information for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief. I'm just gonna now try to go around to staff. Amanda, anything from your office?
Thank you, Mayor. As council may know, Yamhill County denied Riverbend Landfills' expansion upon the remand from the Land Use Board of Appeals. Riverbend Landfill has filed its notice of intent to appeal with Luba challenging that denial. So just wanted to give you all a heads up that that is now going to be before Luba again.
Thank you. Let's go over to Heather, Heather Richards.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilors. Just wanted to share that we are in recruitment right now for all of the committees that the Planning Department staffs. We have several people who have terms expiring at the end of this calendar year. So that's the Planning Commission, Historic Landmarks Committee, Landscape Review Committee, Affordable Housing Task Force. I think that's it, Economic Vitality Leadership Committee as well. So and MIRAC. So if anyone's interested in volunteering and participating in city work, this is where a lot of the informative work takes place that comes up to City Council for consideration. We will be accepting applications for that through the middle of November.
Thank you, Heather. Let's go to Jennifer, let's go to you next.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. I actually do have an announcement to make. I'm just, I'm so proud to let you guys know that the city received a national award last week. We got notice for the twenty, the fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen Comprehensive Annual Finance Financial Report. It's an award conferred by the Government Finance Officers Association. And according to lore, this is the thirty first year running consecutively that the city has earned this. And this is a testament not only to the strong work that I'm privileged to be working with the finance folks, but the city would never be able to earn this kind of recognition if there wasn't consistent, high level of attention given throughout the entire organization on just a daily basis to conduct its financial business with the highest of standards. So it's really congratulations to everyone in the organization. It wouldn't happen without everyone. So I'm just really pleased to be able to share that news. And then we also, just starting on Monday, we are now in our final testing for our by our auditors for the fiscal nineteen twenty year. So we're busy putting together what will be the the CAFR for next year. So that's my report.
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's go to Jenny Berg from the library.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity, but I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, then. Kylie, let's go to you next.
Hi there, just a really quick update on the city's diversity, equity and inclusion efforts. I do have a an ordinance to present to you later this evening. But I want to let you know that we've scheduled our trainings for staff. We'll have training on October twentieth and on November fifth. Those are mandatory trainings. So if any employees are listening, they are mandatory. And we're working with a woman named Alexis from Construct the Present. It's a locally Portland based firm. We also have training happening in our police and fire departments from different providers. They're more geared toward either the fire service or toward law enforcement. And so those are scheduled. I know that the council's been sent calendar invitations for their own training with Alexis from Construct the Present on October twenty ninth. So hope to see you all there. And then I'll I'll catch up with you all on the ordinance in a few minutes.
Thank you, Kylie. Let's go to Scott Burke. Thank you. Let's go to Claudia, did you have anything this evening?
Nothing, Mayor.
And we have Mike Biss on the line. I know he's got some resolutions that we need to go over, but anything from you, speaking Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick clarification on the Airport Commission working meeting that we have scheduled. It will actually be on Thursday, the twenty second at six thirty. And I hope to have that packet material out to the Users Group and Commission later this week. And apologies to Councilor Garvin for any confusion on that meeting date, so.
Thank you. Zach, you have a question?
Maybe, maybe if it's not Mike's department, great. And if it's can happen at a different time, great. But just an update from whoever is the relevant staff. I saw the presence of a handful of the speeding monitoring signs. And I know we randomly get a bunch of emails about speeding and that's never seemed to kind of have a good response. I saw those go up, and so I was excited. I don't know if anyone has any staff member has an update or can illuminate us on necessity or what the project is or anything like that.
Yeah, Mike, I think you can address that. I saw Dale out on Fellows and stopped and talked to him last week. And I got I got immediately at least five responses from people that live on Fellows that says that was a win. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, as we were putting together the budget for the street fund for this fiscal year last spring, we put in the budget the ability to purchase a couple of those Your Speed Is Radar signs. And after the beginning of the budget year, we put went out for quotes for those and and have received them. And the Fellows installation is the first location that we'll place them. But sort of in response to those numerous complaints we've heard on Horizon Drive and on Shatten and and other places around the city, we do intend to kind of move those around. And if they're successful, I would expect that we may even try to do a couple more in a future budget cycle. They do have the ability to gather data for us so we can share that data with the Police Department. And and they can use it for their enforcement efforts along those corridors as well.
Thank you for the question, Zach, and thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I just had saw that go up and wanted an update. Thanks.
Jeff, a report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Briefly later this week is the League of Oregon Cities Annual Conference. It will be presented in a virtual fashion this year. I know a number of council and staff will be attending sessions. I was invited to be part of a panel presentation to the City Managers training that occurs tomorrow, along with the City Manager from Washington, I'm sorry, the City Manager from Ontario and the Assistant County Administrator from Washington County facilitated by a local consultant. I'll be helping present a session on Leading with Compassion. That's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And it does remind members of the council that Wednesday and Thursday is the LOC Conference, starting at nine o'clock each morning and with sessions set up. And so those that have signed up, thank you. And I think the five o'clock was the last to sign up. But I was wonder if you might even make an approach if you could get in on Thursdays. Okay, the cash and investment report is attached in our packets for you're looking at. And so that takes us to our resolutions this evening. And our first resolution is Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a personal service contract with Landis Consulting Engineering Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed sixty four thousand eight hundred for engineering, design and construction service, support work for the water treatment and the R S P S emergency standby generation generator installation. And that's Project twenty twenty dash two. So, Mike, if you could lead us in a discussion on the components of that resolution?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet from Engineering Services Manager Larry Sherwood. And note that the draft resolution, as well as the proposed personal service contract, is in your packet as well. This is related to our efforts to provide emergency standby power at both the Water Reclamation Facility and the Raw Sewage Pump Station. You'll recall that earlier this calendar year, we adopted a resolution awarding a contract to Cummins, Inc. for the purchase of two generators. Our intention and and at that time, and as outlined in that staff report, was that we would upon procuring the generators, would put together a bid package for the installation of those two standby generators. This personal services contract with Landis Consulting Engineering Services will allow us to put those bid documents together. And then in the spring of twenty one, we'll go out to bid for the installation of the two generators. So these are quite large generators, as you might imagine, powering our largest pump station, which is at the Public Works side, as well as the Water Reclamation Facility. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you adopt the resolution as presented, issuing the personal services contract to Landis Consulting Engineers.
Thank you, Mike. A council, do you have any questions of Mike or any discussion items that you'd like to address? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty.
I so moved.
I'm moved.
And a second. Wendy, I'll put you down in a second.
Yeah.
And seconded by Wendy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty passes unanimously six to zero. That's going to take us to Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty two. And this is a resolution adopting a reserve and fund balance policy. And so Jennifer, if you would present to us?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. So as you all will recall, we had a really nice discussion at the work session September sixteenth about the the proposed reserve and fund balance policy that sets targets, not just for the general fund, but across the board in this, all the different cities' funds. And you all requested that I go back and kind of give you a sense of what the price tag difference would be between setting aside a reserve at what staff proposes as a prudent budget reserve level of two months of operating. And how that, how different would it be if we set aside three months, which the current general fund reserve target is twenty five percent three months? So so I I ran those numbers for you. And there's some, a couple of graphs, well, one graph and a table in the staff report that show those variances. And when I applied this to the the current year and the the years previous, it's about, in in every case, it was around one point eight million was the differential to get from two months to three months operating that we'd need to pull off the table and put in our savings account as opposed to utilize in, you know, that year's current service delivery. So the the staff report, I I don't go into why I believe that our risk profile merits going with the two month Government Finance Officers Association levels, because we did discuss that at length. And I did include the staff report from the work session, which has information about that. But I did want to call your attention to a couple of things that are included in the policy that we didn't talk about a lot during the work session that I think may may go to mitigate concerns about two months possibly being too low. The first is that the the reserve and fund balance policy does talk about the ability to add additional, you know, particular funding reserves for special purposes that the city can choose to add to its target level things for the very real needs of future capital improvements or putting funds aside to cushion the impact of future hers retirement rate impacts on the budget or really for any special purpose need you have. This policy allows the flexibility to add additional layers of reserves for special purpose on top of the proposed minimum target. So I wanted to call your attention to that. We also do have included in the reserve requirement for information services that they to begin the process of adding a capital, a tech, a technology capital needs budget and they to have a three, a proposed three to five year buildup window so that we can begin also self funding and putting away dollars for technology needs for the city. So that's also in the policy, and it was something that just, we didn't end up discussing that detail. So I think I think there are a number of reasons to to maintain the the proposed two month operating. But I think at this stage, I'll, you know, leave it open for your discussion or if there are any questions about the data. But we have designed the resolution so that if if you do want to change the two month to a different level, we can still adopt the resolution tonight. And I've highlighted every place in the policy where the two months appears. And so we can insert another level if you all would like to go with a different amount. And then one final add. I would like to add one recital to the resolution that is not included in your packet. So if you all are inclined to move forward with this tonight, I would ask that an additional recital be included. And the wording would be, whereas this policy allows for specific fund or program reserve targets adopted by the City Council via separate actions that exceed the minimum levels, that that is allowable under this policy. So in other words, if in other separate actions the council has identified a fund or a program needs a higher level of reserve, that that's fully permissible with this resolution. So.
Okay, let's open it up for questions of Jennifer. We've had a number of, well, we've had workshops and we've had presentations. And this is the culmination of of those discussions. So let's just open up for questions. Okay, seeing none, again, as I prepared for this evening, I see that we have in the materials a target of two months of our operating expenditures, which calculates out to to two twelfths of our general fund categories. And so that's where we sit right now. If if there's no further questions, I think we would be looking for an approval. So again, I'll open it up one last time.
This is Sal. I I guess one question that I have is that, did your thinking kind of assume trying to move to a twenty five percent return on a very short time window, like one year? Or did you kind of take into account the idea that we might start moving over a lengthier period of time towards that goal? The concern that I have is that individually identifying specific funds for a reserve amount may protect some of those funds that are not part of the general fund. But the rest of the money, the general fund money, the core of it seems like it's fungible. So I'm not sure how doing individual caps on specific funds really gets to the nut of the problem, which as I see it is basically a lot of downward pressure on our city budget from expenses associated with step increases and the pirs and and healthcare and the normal cost of doing business. And I guess I just feel like we have still another ten year window where we're going to be pushing against a headwind. So I guess that was a lengthy version of the question. But was there any thought given to kind of extending the period to which we try and hit that twenty five percent mark?
Well, the the policy is written has has a three to five year implementation window. And then once, and then the policy goes on to read, once we reach our goal, then from then on, if a budget was presented that would go under, one of the requirements would be that we would need to include a plan as to how we would replenish and get back up to minimum targets. So and does that go to your question?
It it does, thank you. I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm voicing is a little bit of a concern still, heartburn over just the two month number, realizing that it's going to affect services that we provide to go to a higher number and that that's a trade off that we'll have to consider. But I'm just feeling a little little heartburn over that.
And if I'm not mistaken, two twelfths is about a, it's a seventeen percent reserve target that we're going with. And is, if you remember, as we had talked to our bond specialist, it is so critical that we do make a determination of where we want to end and seventeen percent is that number. And then it it's not so important how long it takes us to get there, but it is the fact that we know where we're going and we're making a conscientious determination to get there. Because the the markets and the bond markets will be very cognizant. If we set a set a path in motion, we are, we're going to be held accountable to that. And we do know that at some point in the future, we don't know when that would be. But as we're looking at our facilities, there's going to be some needs out there and we want to be found in a favorable position as we have with every other bond or levy that we've done and we've taken it to our citizens, that we can get the best return. And we've even been able to save tremendous amounts of dollars as interest rates have gone down and we've refinanced some of that debt and saved millions and millions of dollars. So we have really taken, from my perspective, a very conservative approach. And I think this is a very conservative approach. I was the one that was looking at maybe two and a half months. And we said, it's either three or two. I feel comfortable with two a- as it fits the standard out there. And and again, our consultants would indicate that that would feel good from their perspective. I I don't know, Kelly, if you have some other insights, as the two of us have been on that audit committee and have put maybe a little more work into this.
Well, it is the GFOA standard that they suggest. We we've always had healthy reserves and that stood us in good stead through the recession and through this COVID thing, too. I think it's important, you know, to be cognizant that, you know, it'd be wonderful to do twenty five percent. But I mean, we weren't keeping up with what needed to happen. So I I think three months is just a little bit too. It's too much for the city to handle. We're so in so much better shape than any other city around. We are doing fund balances and things. We are, we look much better than anywhere around. So I I feel good about the seventeen percent and I wouldn't say that if I didn't feel that way.
And and I'll add one other piece to this. You know, as a council, we've talked a little bit about, you know, what is that happy medium between carrying too much and not being able to deliver services and not carrying enough? And I think, at least from my perspective, that seventeen percent is is something that I think hits both sides. In case of emergencies, we we have enough operations, money set aside to to take us through. And we know, unless there's something very catastrophic, that we will not lose all of our revenues. It's not like we're really saying we just have enough to go for two months because the sources of our funds aren't aren't subject to the same economic pressures as businesses and the uptown, the upturns and the the downturns of the economy. It's values of our homes. And although, you know, in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, we did see values of homes go down. But it wasn't, you know, it wasn't enough to, we had to pull on reserves, but it gives us much more than a two month reserve, if I might put it that way.
Can I ask a follow up question?
Yes, Sal.
Yeah, sorry. Jennifer, what would be the implication or the any negative implication to the city if we set a higher reserve and fail to meet it? Because I I am somewhat persuaded by Mayor Hill's point that if we set a target that's unrealistic and don't hit it, that that could have negative implications for our bond rating is is is, I think, what I heard.
Absolutely true. That's what we had, the Audit Committee invited the municipal advisor that the city has. And he came and that was his advice, that you need to set reasonable targets. You need to make progress towards those targets. And that setting something that's too high and not being able to realistically achieve that, that that does not, that doesn't help your case. So because, and he was comfortable with the fact that, I mean, GFOA is the recognized national organization for municipal, all things municipal finance. And that their minimum number is what the our ratings agencies, they're fully aware of that and that they should be comfortable with that. But it's it's the combination of realism and making progress that's key.
Does that answer your question, Sal?
It does, Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer.
Good. And and again, let me just make a point. You know, Kelly and I, as Audit Committee, had had maybe a little more insight into this. And again, you've given us the ability to have many more meetings and talking to people. And so I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we've had more opportunity to look at this than the council. So Wendy, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer, and and please extend our thanks to the Budget Committee and Audit Committee for all the work that they put into this. It's very well done and thorough. I like the idea of doing the two month target. I think that will be a realistic target for us. I did have a question about the policy review. I know that we, as a, as a council, will be looking at it annually. Can you describe what internally? I know that there was a part that talked about concern about cutting, because we will have pressure on being able to maintain our services in addition to having the fund reserve, which is the is the challenge, right?
Exactly.
So how will internally we be evaluating that as we proceed through the year to make sure we're not cutting services, you know, at the expense of the if we don't need to? Because I know historically, we've been really conservative and come in with a higher reserve than we expected. Can you describe that a little bit? How we'll make sure that we're tracking and that any new information we're getting over the course of the year, we're able to respond to that new information?
Well, yeah, those are, those are really important questions. So so this policy does have implications for for the budget process. And so it means that we will need to be budgeting tighter, both revenue and expenses than we have in the past. Because what we've, my perception of how we've sort of moved past the fact that we haven't been budgeting at a level of what our current general fund policy would ask us to do is because, you know, we take for granted, we know that we are going to leave money on the table essentially at the end of the year and that will be okay. And so what this policy does is tells us, we can't, we can't do that anymore. We can't rely on an expectation that we're going to come out of each year with with money, extra money floating around. And we need to also acknowledge the possibility that we might come in under. And I think, you know, it's times like these when you've got the financial consequences of, you know, natural disasters and in our case, the public health, public health emergency, that it's, it's very unclear still what the ultimate fiscal impacts of this are going to be for the community and for for us as a, as an organization. And so getting getting away from counting on leaving money on the table, I think, will will be helpful, but it will require discipline. And hard choices will need to be, you know, discussed and I don't know, thoroughly vetted. So one of the things we're doing, as you all know, is we're adding a mid-year review that's coming up. And we'll be looking at what what we're seeing the impact of COVID as well as how the fiscal year ended and how the the property tax revenues are looking to come in to be able to gauge what we need to do potentially this year and as a first step of informing the budget process for next year. And in addition, the the discussion on core services, I think, will be key. And that's, that's been on the 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 strategic plan for, I think, a couple of years that we need to evaluate what are our core services and then find ways to make sure that we're aligning how we allocate our funds to those activities. So I think that combination of things will help us make us informed a choice. Well, for staff to make us informed a proposal to you and for you all to be able to evaluate and deliberate on ultimately what we do do in the years, short term and long. Does that, does that help?
Yes, yeah, it really does. I mean, and I also appreciated the comment that you made in the report about that it can't just be about costs. It also needs to be about looking at the whole, right? Including revenue, including value in core services and making smart decisions. So I appreciate how challenge, how how significant this is for us to make this change. And I do like the idea of doing the two months to give us an opportunity to really put the disciplines in place and see what we're up against with the reality of our world right now and the other pressures. And then also these additional disciplines to try to get our reserves back in line. So, thank you. That answered my question.
And and Wendy, as as Jennifer pointed out, you know, we truly are going to really do a much better job at the budgeting function without having, you know, understatement of revenue coming in and an overstatement of of expenses. And then they wash out and we all clap and say, oh, we hit what we needed. We need to have that discipline. And as, you know, as in your role in your company, you know that you want to be, you want to know true cost and you want to know what that is so you can pass and 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 get the revenue in for services performed. And and so that's going to put us more in line with, I think, the way we ought to be doing that. Zach, you have a question?
Wendy, were you, Wendy, were you done? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions and a statement and some thanks. Kind of dovetailing with Wendy, you got me going. But I think with this laser focus and and refinement on budget reserve, it also dovetails well with real refinement on priorities. And I know we already were kind of, that's obviously something we need to be considered about. But I think once we get through that core service filter, this really enhances the need for our priorities and understanding of our priorities specifically as it relates to the budget. So I think, I think with that in mind, I think, I think a lot, I know we're talking about, I know we're talking about reserve policy. But I like some of the things that we've instituted budget policy wise or monitoring wise because of COVID. And I would love to see those carry forward to help us with that prioritization, specifically sort of that COVID wishlist, as it were, right? Okay, we're going to check in at mid-year and if we're doing well, here's the list of identified projects we have that we would love to do and talk about. That was great, right? That's a really easy way to distill the the fringe of what the budget implications are if where our bucket is this full versus this full. Means we can do this or at least have discussions that we know we can do these things. So I I like that running list and I also like that mid-year check in and hope that goes in. I think that would also dovetail with specifically Mark Davis's comments that we've acknowledged getting sort of more frequent updates to the council. And I I don't want to overburden staff and I don't think a monthly thing is totally necessary. But I like that sort of constant check in that we're not all at once talking about the giant budget of doom, that we can at least have a running start on some of those things. And specifically, if we had that sort of wishlist, just sort of how those tie together. Additionally, I think I'd like to also see in discussion on priorities. And I know this is not totally reserved, but as we move forward with refining our budget policies, sort of having, when staff starts to sit down and crack open that Excel spreadsheet of what's my budget going to be this year, almost having a budget committee, city council, staff discussion of bud, policy priorities and how the budget is going to carry those out. I think starting ahead of time and implementing those is going to be really cool. So those were sort of some of my statements. And I'd also like to really, really recognize staff and Jennifer's work on this. As the Dr. No on the budget in the last cycle, I I talked a lot about wanting to see some progress and some commitment on a reserve. And so I I really appreciate staff's ability to prioritize that and get that done and in front of us. But the budget committee's willingness to participate with us in that discussion and council's willingness to have that discussion. So my appreciation to all of you in that. And I I I like and appreciate what I see here. So just those comments about additional budgeting and policy moving forward and that this really implements a need for a constant refinement of our policy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing no, Jeff?
Just note, if you're getting ready to ask for a motion, it would be appropriate to ask for a motion to approve the resolution as amended by the staff recommendation presented by the Finance Director or words to that effect. So we get that extra recital in the in the printed resolution when it's signed.
Thank you, Jeff, from that perspective. Okay, so we have before us Resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty two. And it would be the resolution, but we would add that piece to give the recitals that the And it would be the resolution, but we would add that piece uh to give the recitals that uh the um finance staff through the finance director has indicated in our in our in our write-up of that and it to be at a two per a two-month reserve, which equates to a seventeen percent reserve. And uh anything else I need to add to that, Jennifer? Okay, so I I would ask for a motion to approve uh Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-two as uh as I've recited that and as Jennifer's recited it and as Jeff. So we've got a three-pronged approach here. So do I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Wendy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Uh Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-two passes unanimously six to zero. Again, thank you for many, many hours that have been put on this, but I think it has been one of those learning exercises and I feel really good uh the discussion and the work that's been placed onto this resolution. Next, we have a Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-three. This is a resolution appointing Hadley uh Heller as our youth liaison to the McMinnville Historic Landmark Committee. And so Chuck will have you uh give us uh the rundown on Hadley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh good e- good evening, councilors. Um so yeah, we did receive an application for a youth liaison representative for our Historic Landmarks Committee. Uh was Hadley Heller and her application is in your packet. Um a few years ago, the council added the youth liaison position onto the city committees and uh we've been looking for a a representative on our Historic Landmarks Committee. And we received the application. Um Mayor Hill and I uh held an interview with with Hadley and um we both thought she brought a lot of uh awareness and knowledge of historic buildings and history and had a a passion for it that we could tell. And um so we both agreed that she would be a good fit for the committee. So um it'll be the Historic Landmarks Committee's first youth liaison representative. So it'll be exciting to get uh someone new on the board. Uh and from our interview too, Hadley seemed to to have a interest in raising awareness about historic preservation efforts and what that means for our communities. So that would be a good uh focus to bring to the committee, something that we've talked about doing for a while. I don't know if we can get somebody to help us with that. That would be great. Uh the appointment would be for a two-year period, um so expiring in October of twenty twenty-two. Um and I did notice that Hadley joined on on the meeting here, so I don't know if we want to give her an opportunity to speak, but um other than that, if you have any more specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Hadley, it's good to see you again. And uh I'll tell you, I was so impressed as we had a conversation. Uh in full disclosure, I will let you know that Hadley is Heather Richards' daughter. So those that wouldn't know, and and she talked about how she's picked up on some of those um traits that we love of her mother and her love for architecture. Love to be able to go out and see you in a different light. So Hadley, why don't you just just um introduce yourself to the council and uh and again, it's good to see you.
Um, I'm Hadley Heller and I'm really excited for the opportunity to join the committee and be a part of the community. So thank you.
And we went over what their responsibilities are and the time commitments and she's very much aware of that. So um I I guess at this point, uh I would just ask, do we have a motion to appoint Hadley Heller to our um our Historic Landmarks uh committee?
I saw.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so Kelly Menke and uh Wendy uh gave a second and I know Zach wanted to be a part of it, but he missed out. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. So Hadley, welcome to the Historic Landmark Commission and uh and being able to be a part of that. Uh the the uh resolution passes unanimously six to zero. Congratulations. It's good to have you on. Okay, that ta- this takes us to our ordinance, only ordinance that we have this evening, and that's ordinance uh number fifty ninety-seven. An ordinance adopting a new McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter two point three five, establishing a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. And I'm always going to say leadership on top of that, even though it's not a part of it, but we have to build leadership uh capabilities in our DEI. And so uh I'm uh going to uh uh consider the matter of ordinance fifty ninety-seven. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Hearing none, then we will have the city attorney, please read the ordinance uh into the record.
Ordinance number fifty ninety-seven and ordinance adopting a new McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter two point three five, establishing a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee.
Thank you. Uh and so at this point, uh Kylie, we're going to ask you to present and we've had discussion, we've had an opportunity to review and get back to you, but go ahead and uh present to the council for discussion.
Okay, so um thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I'll direct you to the ordinance, number five zero nine seven in your packet this evening. I last spoke with the council on September sixteenth to provide an update on the city's efforts regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. Uh the council's identified that a DEI committee um is a top priority in these efforts. So as such, the city's prepared this ordinance for your review and recommends that the council does adopt the ordinance. Um I'll speak about it from a very high level. You can reference the ordinance itself um in your packet. But the role of this seven-member advisory committee is to advise the council on policy decisions related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, also to make recommendations to the council on public engagement strategies and methods by which McMinnville residents can better participate in the decision-making process. Also to advise the city on culturally responsive service delivery programming and communication strategies, to update and oversee the city's progress on the diversity, equity, and inclusion plan, which is currently still in a draft format. It's my hope that this committee can help refine that and um sort of finalize it so we can start making some real progress there. They'll also oversee um progress on applicable goals and objectives in the MacTown twenty thirty-two Strategic Plan. And they will, um as the mayor mentioned earlier, I did, this committee will serve as a way to identify our local leaders to build leadership capacity in McMinnville's communities of color and hopefully serve as a pathway for folks interested in running for elected office or for just being more involved in um our local government. So uh if approved by the council tonight, the recruitment for committee members will begin this week. Uh that will be uh held through a brief online application and followed by an interview process. And I anticipate that the application process will be open for at least three to four weeks to give folks adequate amount of time to engage with the um application itself and to consider the the role. And then the evaluation process, one to two weeks. Um I know just after sitting through our work session earlier that you all have a very busy agenda the rest of the year. It is my hope to have um a re- a list of recommended committee members to present to the council via resolution before the end of the calendar year, but I'm going to have that be a pretty gray timeline just due to what you all have going on um in your packed agendas. So hopefully by the end of twenty twenty, if not early on in twenty twenty-one, I hope to have a a list of seven uh recommended committee members and a youth advisory member to present to you for a resolution and adoption at that time. So if anyone has any questions about the ordinance, about the committee, um I'll do my best to answer that tonight. Um so any questions?
So let's go ahead and open up the council for any questions. Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um a couple of questions uh before my thanks and statements. Um the you answered the first one, interview process and dates. Um I I I've never been a part of creating a new committee, I've been a part of committees. I'm sure there's a very smart answer for this. How do you, how do you, how do you phase on a committee so they don't all phase off at the same time?
That's a good question. Amanda might be able to kind of answer that one, but we will have people have um kind of the rotating terms. So our, I believe that our first group, a a section of those committee members will have shorter terms than the rest. But Amanda, if you want to chime in?
Yeah, Kylie's right. So um we'll have different committee members signing up for different term periods, basically, on this first round. So then they expire at different times.
Will they, will they be, is it draws, draws, and you get the two years, you get the four years, you get the whatever years, or is it uh you can sign up if you want, only be here for two or one or three, you can do that? Is that what your thought is?
I think we'll put that implication process and have it be if somebody wants to do a shorter term, that we'd give them the preference for that. Um but you know, up until the resolution of committee members, I think it's all sort of up for grabs with the folks who are interested.
Okay. Um uh one thing that jumped out was meeting schedule, um meeting as required, I understand. In the uh um I understand that um I'm uh sorry, botched my phrasing of the question. On the meeting schedule, it jumped out at me that a- as 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 needed or as required, I didn't, I did not apologize and not refresh myself on how the other committees we have are set up specifically related to their written language on meeting schedules. So like planning commission, is that what this is? And that's just what they've established a monthly thing and um or or i- is that, is this pretty standard for our language? Or how often do you see them meeting and how uh how often do you see needing to meet or or what are your thoughts on that?
So we we deliberately left that vague in this um ordinance. Um as as we build this this team up, we'll probably work with them to figure out what would be the best way to handle that. I could see folks meeting monthly, at least while we're getting things started so that we can make really good progress along the way. And that might taper off to an every other month meeting. Um but this group together is gonna to come up with some of those rules that they'll have um for the committee.
Excellent. I know at the onset, we're gonna capitalize on your expertise, passion, and knowledge on this, but I just want to make sure that we institutionalize and memorialize a a rigid schedule that will outlast even you, hence perish the thought, but uh uh that will outlast even y- your w- willingness to run that committee. Um so that was my thought on that. Uh and and just want to make sure, I remember we, you, it was probably a little archaic in our transition, but I remember we had a citizen as advisory committee that just ended up not meeting, so we dissolved it and decided to just make new committees as needed to for things. Just want to make sure this doesn't also go the way of that committee. Um so that was kind of the the needed question there. Um my only other thought or want comment I wanted to make was I noticed that the the budget still doesn't make the mention in sort of the the specifically the word budget doesn't make it, it's mentioned in its responsibilities and powers. Um I I really think if we want to allow the ca- this committee to have meaningful change, they will be able to im- affect the way in which we budget and execute our priorities with our budget. Uh I I really hope that that makes its way to their charge despite the word budget not being in here. And I know that's a little bit of a nuanced difference, but really, I really want to make sure that that document is in play, that they can look at it and and affect the way in which we do things. Not that that I mean, I know budget committee members are going to get a vote on that and saying that. I know we are and they're gonna, they're gonna make us better at doing our job, looking at these things that the city does in relation to equity and diversity, but I just want to make sure that that's in their in their charge and realm. I know you've you've thought of that before, but um I just want to make sure that's in your thought process.
Yes, definitely. We didn't um put budget particularly down in this ordinance because there's not a budget assigned to this committee. But I've I've definitely heard the council loud and clear about um this committee's involvement with our budgeting process and our decision-making process. So definitely noted. Thank you.
And and it's embedded in our strategic plan in a significant way. And so where you have a significant uh position in the strategic plan, there's there's going to be the ability to get the work done.
And that uh master of segues is always Mayor Hill, that my next point was related to the strategic plan. And also I wa- I wanted to give kudos to councils and mayors before me that uh included the the creation of this committee in the approved twenty nineteen strategic plan. And so um forethought and and glad we're now, we're getting to it now and doing it, but congra- you know, thank you for including it in there and and having it be something in our strategic plan that we're able to execute. Um I really think, as Mayor Hill also said, this is going to be a great training ground for some potential future councilors to who really have heart and emotion and passion and and smarts that that perhaps aren't uh available to us dullards uh who are are planning commission graduates, but um al- or also a ways to make meaningful change without having to ru- do that horrible thing of running for office. So um thank you for the creation and execution of this. Um and I look forward to what you create.
Thank you, Zach. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. An additional um answer to um some of Zach's ob- observation, Councilor Gary's observations, one of the first things this committee will do, much as our other standing committees, is they'll put together a proposed work plan and sort of operational rules that will come back to the council uh for approval. And and so that's where you'll get a lot of the other issues answered. How often are they going to meet? Are there going to be subcommittees? Are we going to have you know, short, medium, and long-term aspirations? Um so that will be some of the early work of this committee and it will come back to you for for approval as well.
Thank you. Any other questions of Kylie? Oh, oh, go ahead, Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Um just to note that for any councilors who make a motion on this, that this is a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
Right.
Go ahead, Zach.
Sorry, a procedural question. Uh with Kylie's efforts for recruitment, and maybe this is Amanda's question, um uh with the, didn't uh doesn't it take thirty days to for this to take effect? And are we able to recruit for a committee that technically doesn't exist? Or however that phases, when it doesn't matter until we actually make the motion to appoint the list. By then, the the committee or the ordinance will actually have taken effect? Is that this will catch up on itself?
Correct, exactly. So as the council cannot take any action on this until the thirty days has run. So we will make sure that it comes back to the council after that thirty days.
Thank you. The one other piece that I just want to share, um I am so pleased with the process and the progress we've made on this. We've had a lot of things in front of this, even though it is in our strategic plan, but we are implementing it. I have an opportunity tomorrow at uh LOC uh and we have the breakout of uh the mayors. And I've been very involved in bringing uh DEI to the mayors, because the bigger cities tend to do this and our size cities are starting the process. And then the smaller cities don't have the capacity to do it. And so tomorrow, we're going to take a two, uh an hour and a half session and and talk about how to create uh a DEI uh resolution and a program. And I can't, I couldn't be any prouder as I go to that tomorrow and say, we did it here in McMinnville and you too can do it. So uh just a side comment from that perspective. So uh let's now ask for uh any public comment, anyone out there that would like to uh share public comment as it deals with uh our DEI uh um ordinance. And if you'd raise your hand and uh our uh city recorder, Claudia, will recognize. I'll call, I'll call one more time.
No one has raised their hand, ma- mayor.
Thank you, Claudia. So uh again, I will, I will ask if there's any further discussion among council. Okay, what we're going to do now is uh ask for a motion to pass ordinance number fifty ninety-seven to a second reading.
I would like to move this to a second reading.
Okay. And a second?
Amanda, didn't you, oh, didn't you say something about passing it on the first reading? Correct. So if this is the first reading, to move it to the second reading.
Gotcha. Okay. Sorry.
It moved by Zach and Wendy, was that a second?
Uh Remy.
Oh, Remy, excuse me. And Remy, and so uh for those uh uh and so I will ask uh for uh those in favor to signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays, please? Any nays, please signify by saying or oppose, say nay.
Mayor, I have to do roll call for the ordinance.
Right.
So Counselor Dropkin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Can you say it again, Sal?
Counselor Peralta?
You're on mute, Sal.
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. And Council President Minkie?
Okay, that moves, that moves the resolution with a unanimous vote to a second reading. Is that correct, Amanda?
Correct.
And so we will have the second reading of ordinance 5097 by title only?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5097. An ordinance adopting a new McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 2.35, establishing a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee.
Okay, I will ask for a motion to adopt number 5079. Sal, who, and a second?
Second.
And a second by Wendy. And so I will ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Dropkin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5097 passed unanimously by a vote of six to zero. Again, thanks all that have been involved in that. That takes us to the conclusion of our meeting this evening. Council, just remind you that we're going to be going into executive session. And so thank you, everyone, for participating. Have a safe and good evening.
Are we going to re-log in then?
Yes, I think.